I renew.
Thanks so much. That's why I was letting you know exactly.
It's always so interesting.
Good.
Yep. Yeah. Oh, because things need to order, but everyone please stand for pledge allegiance. I.
And it is all. I mean, she's.
Only two. Our first item is the consent agenda. The recommended action is to approve the following items which are included in the consent agenda. For A minutes from May sixth, twenty twenty five and for B minutes from May twenty first, twenty twenty five. May I have a motion, please?
Break vote.
Any discussion second?
I'll second. All right, that's right.
No discussion, please vote. Different accounters.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Six yes, one extension. John Hawkins.
Great. Moving on to our first public go to the cause. We tell welcome to all of our guests this evening. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Karen?
There's nothing on email.
Okay. And then information. They were the public.
Oh, there was, I put information in there.
Yeah, this is very strange. I'm seeing.
Um, so um, when Matt, when they were all here last week, they were trying to figure out how to get into the information.
Okay, okay.
To see it. And so I put notes into that section so that you can, you know, click on the public link and then you know how to go and find stuff.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking at right now.
Yes, you are.
So later you could look at that. Our next section is reports to the board and our first is Mr. Dana Wood and the treasurer's report, please.
Sure, if you look at, we have a banner month in terms of cash receipt, a little over a million dollars. Normally this time, you know, this time of year, it's not as high because of where our revenue comes from, but most of that is, you know, state aid looks like the state has sent us our money a little sooner than normal in terms of our state aid. So that's good. Cash disbursements for the end of April, April was a little over a million dollars. That's on our standard in terms of our normal operating. You know, for the month, our reserves, if you look on the other side, still sitting at a little over fourteen million dollars, sitting in our, our cash reserves through nine class, ICS and things like that. So that's good because that's what helps generates the revenue, additional revenue on that. So that's a good sign, but that will, you know, quickly tick down. As the school year ends with closing out everything in terms of salaries and the rest of our expenses and all that. I think what you see in May, we've already moved about a million dollars out of that already since April thirtieth. But again, that's expected in terms of you know, how our revenue comes in and everything goes out. But also, and we're still sitting pretty well in terms of our treasury reports. Probably one of the smallest outstanding checks in terms of, since I've been here, a little over seven thousand dollars. You know, I think we only had one warrant in the month of April with our spring break and stuff like that. So our vendors had plenty of time to deposit the checks that we sent them. So otherwise, still looking pretty good in terms of what's in our bank accounts.
Anyone have any questions regarding the treasurer's report? If not, the next report is the operations report and also back to Dana.
Sure. So let's figure out, do an update on terms of of the repair reserve fund and what's the board approved in terms of the use of that. The new generator is installed here at the middle high school. In fact, they were, the vendor, the contractor was here today to kind of finish it up. The generator was a little longer than the concrete platform that was there. So they had to come in shore that up in terms of laying an additional two and a half feet of, of the concrete pad underneath it. The nice thing is that portion of, of the generator is, is, is actually kind of empty. There's nothing there. The actual motor itself rests on the other side of the generator. But everything has been tested and all that. That happened a couple of weeks ago. So it is fully, you know, up and running and functioning. Our phone system is, that has been fully transferred over. That happened over spring break. And so we have a whole new phone system throughout the district. There's still, you know, minor tweaks, you know, along the way in terms of our, our, our phone lines and stuff like that, fax lines, but probably said and done, I mean, all the classrooms and all the rooms throughout the district have new phone lines as well. The kiln is on order. That was ordered the end of April, ten to twelve week lead times. And we're hoping to have that installed and ready to go for the start of the school year. As well as the unit vents here, there were eleven of them that we are in the process of replacing. The vendor Dan Forth in poor climates, they say that that will happen and should be installed again before the start of the school year. So we're moving ahead with all new heating vents and some heating cooling vents up on the third floor and this west wing here. So that's progressing nicely as well. So it's kind of where we are with the repair reserve. Oh, the art sink and, and the plumbing and all that for the art sink, that's in as well. So that'll get put in over the summer.
Next report is the superintendent report. Ken Ten, please.
Sure. So lots to cover. This is probably our busiest time of year. So I'm just going to rattle through. So starting off with a pretty extraordinary accomplishment by thirteen year olds. So Lila Fay at Queensberry Invitational broke the school record in the three thousand meters. So this was a seventeen year mark held by Heidi Bonback.
Ten seconds.
Beated by ten seconds. So Lila is qualified to run in the national meet in Philadelphia this summer, about fifteen hundred and three thousand. I know that we just recently had our sectional meet and I want to say she was second in the sectional meet, but she's had a great season. So just, it's a rare thing to have a record of that length be broken. So congrats. Seventh grader.
Yeah, and Heidi Bonback was our star in, in the day. So that's wild.
Pretty cool. Other celebrations in the sports arena. So some of you may have seen in the paper that our boys, our city baseball team, they won a title victory over Johnsburg Minerva, a walk off in the bottom of the ninth. Bam Morelli hit it and they captured the Class D championship title. So it's the stuff of cinema. They're getting ready to play North Warren tomorrow, section two's champion in the regional championship. So great job for, for the team. Second sectional championship in the last three years.
That's great. Very exciting.
On the golf pitch or field, if you were, I'm not sure what it is. What do we call that course or the course? I'm just checking. On the golf arena, the team just had their sectional match at McCraywood this year and our own Carver Belt placed third. And he is preparing to head to Rochester on Friday for the state competition. So we wish Carter much luck or Carver much luck on Friday. I have a note here from the board at Thrive and Thrift. So certainly our partnership with Thrive and Thrift in, in the lower lot over the last year has been a priority area for the district. And this is in recognition of the students in our streaming program. So you may recall our stream program composed of ninth and tenth grade students. A lot of project based and community based learning and experiences. So they shared that the stream program has made a meaningful and consistent impact on Thrive and Thrift Food Pantry and Thrift Store throughout the school year. Students in the program have regularly contributed to the food pantry, collecting donations from local grocery stores, including Hannaford Price Shopper and delivering them to the pantry. Their final visit for the year is scheduled for Monday, June ninth at one fifteen P M. The partnership has not only provided critical support for the pantry's operations, but has also showcased the student's commitment and responsibility. The students are led by Kristen Boslett. She has done a wonderful job with these students and deserves praise alongside them. And Thrive and Thrift expresses deep appreciation for the stream program and encourages others to recognize the valuable role it plays in local food access. Great job to those kids and to Ms. Boslett for setting that up. I, I see them go past my window at least once a week and they make the rounds and they tell me, Kathy Bliss told me two weeks ago, you know, the, the, some of the donations at Hannaford were pretty low. So if we can get the word out to the community, you know, so I'm getting the word out to the community that we can, we can continue to see that support. It's being well utilized by. We are coming off the heels of lots of concerts and art shows. So since our last meeting, we had our music and art departments hold their district chorus, district band and art festivals at the middle high school. So the attendance at the event was pretty much to the rafters. It was very packed, which is great. Students in grades three through twelve performed in separately and then in unison at the end of each concert. And they also, folks were encouraged to go check out the foyer for the artwork that was there. So great job by our kids. It was a pleasure to be there. Thanks to our board members who attended. Appreciate seeing some of your faces. That's great. And thanks to Mr. Blobbins, Mr. Prosper and Ms. Kukufka, music world and Mr. Robinson, Ms. Huber and Ms. Philion from the art world for all of their leadership. Hot off the press, we have a two thousand twenty five Chrysler Pacifica all wheel drive in our transportation parking lot. This chariot will be our driver education vehicle. We are most excited to see it registered in anticipation for the start of the program in September. Very happy to have that. We are two weeks into collecting information on our strategic plans surveys. So we're about halfway through our, our five year strategic plan and a component of the plan every year is that we seek information from all of our stakeholders, students, our staff and our families about what's going well, where we can improve, what we should consider. So the last two years, we've compiled that data and utilized it to, to make changes in-house and we intend to do the same this year. So our goal of being a united, empowered, engaged school community is predicated on a collaborative approach and an ongoing conversation. So that's something that I'm looking forward to review. It has been bustling in terms of field trips and assemblies, particularly the last couple of weeks and looking forward as well. So students have already had an acapella group from Plattsburgh State Performing for the elementary students last week. Today we had trips out to Fort Ticonderoga for seventh grade. We're also going to be sending our second grade to Fort Ticonderoga later in the month. We have students at Organization of American States at Plattsburgh State University, which is a government based program where students take on the roles of different Latin American countries and represent them in committees. We are preparing also for future visits that are going to take place. So we have our Albany trip for fifth graders going to the courthouse, a federal courthouse and the New York State Museum on Thursday of this week. We have a music and physics trip to Lake George and Great Escape. Right, Mr. Brenner? Excellent. Awesome. That'll be great. We have a high school art trip to Mass MoCA, which is the Massachusetts Museum of Contemporary Art. And we have our upcoming senior trip to Maine. Apologies for the lack of an E there. That was an error of omission on my part. This list is definitely not exhaustive. There are a lot of things happening. So in addition to sharing those things, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge our transportation team. This has been a year that has placed incredible strain on our transportation. And they are led by Nikki Corson, who is our transportation director. And Nikki is exceptional at her job. And her, her team, they have stepped up to such degrees to fulfill all of these field trips in our sports trips, particularly in the spring when it's been so condensed, the schedule due to the late spring break. They have stepped up to the, the greatest possible extent that they can. And in many cases, it just hasn't been enough. And so when you're delivering a product and your best is only to deliver a portion of complete, it can feel a bit deflating. And I just want to acknowledge how exceptional they are. Nikki Dana and I have been, you know, putting our heads together. How can we incentivize additional drivers? It's a twofold issue. The, the one issue is, is that we do need at, at least one additional driver in our fleet full time. But then there's a dependency on substitute drivers as well. And when the end of the day requires most of our drivers to take our students home from school, but that gets super close to sports trips taking off. You need to have additional people to pick up those runs and absent those, we've had to rely on a litany of different folks, coaches, families, parents. So I also want to express my gratitude to everyone who's done that. But to just also acknowledge that we're, we're doing our best, we're canvassing for drivers. We, we mail postcards, cards home. If you know someone or they know someone who's interested, it's a fulfilling job. It's not like The Simpsons. If you've seen episodes, our drivers are well treated and our kids are well treated too. So hopefully we get some, some more applicants down the road, but you know, without, without our drivers, none of these things would be possible. Let's take a shift to the elementary school for the upcoming field day, which is on June sixteenth. Our field day is when our students participate in games and activities. And for the second year in a row, Lake Placid Police Department will be driving up in an ice cream truck. We are excited to continue that collaboration with them and thank the police department for their support. Speaking of the elementary school, the school recently concluded its primary project certification. If you're unfamiliar with what the primary project is, it's a program designed to support young kids in kindergarten through grade two. And it's for students who may benefit from additional help in developing school adjustment skills. So the program pairs students with trained child associates who works with them one on one in a play based setting to build confidence, improve peer relations and support emotional wellbeing. So they recently just completed the national certification. This is definitely embedded in our elementary school. It's, it's an important component of the social emotional supports we have for our kids. And really the backbone of that program is a combination of individuals. Deanna Brown, our guidance counselor, she really oversees, you know, just the administration of the program within the building. Linda Young is a longstanding provider in that role. And this year we also added the arc height to the role. So we have really a team of three who provide this service for the kids. But when you walk into the building, it's just on the side of the kindergarten wing and I can pop in there and see Linda, you know, playing with, with young students who are having a hard time adjusting and it, it makes a big difference. So I'm pleased to see us, you know, we're approaching, I think, three decades of the certification program in our elementary school. So it's pretty great. Moving on to our oldest students, our seniors are nearly complete their capstone projects. So the capstones are slated to conclude on June seventeenth. And these are really the culmination of their experience at the high school. Each student selects in the area of interest. They have some job shadow or create projects, do community service or explore a hobby or an interest personally. They bring it to life and then they experience it, they research it and they present it to their panel of staff members. So just want to thank Ms. Kyler for organizing our students with the capstone experience yet again this year and also all of our staff who are panelists to go in and listen to our students work. I've had an opportunity to, to go and listen to capstone projects each year and they're a highlight. So it's, it's a lot of fun. We had students this year who have paired an interest or hobby they have with some sort of civic minded goal. Some who have an interest in running, they've they trained and organized a race and the proceeds of the race then went to support a cause such as childhood illness. Or student who is deeply interested in volleyball, put forth volleyball camps, charged a fee, use that to give a scholarship to another student to go to the St. Lawrence University volleyball. So all sorts of great things that our kids do and it's a special time of year for our seniors to, to showcase what they've taken on. My last item here is just some recognition, board recognition. So the New York State School Boards Association would like to congratulate our board president, Colleen Locke. She's being awarded the level one board achievement award through the New York State School Boards Association.
Congratulations.
I'll give autographs after the meeting.
So the recognition includes a certificate of recognition, which I have here and we'll pass it down. And the award is based on Colleen's ongoing participation in NISMA trainings, events and leadership. So thank you so much, Colleen, for all your work and we appreciate everything you do for our school.
And John. With that, we have a professional development overview and Tim is going to do a small presentation on this.
So I'll get this. Okay, so yeah, I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview. I know in a previous meeting, one of the questions is like, how do we approach professional development in the district? So I think the best way to talk about it is to head on. It's at times a simple and at times a complicated topic. So there's a push and pull of what's relevant, what's appropriate and what the budget and time can allow for. And the targets are always moving between our goals in the district and the needs of students and the goals of New York State. So there's a little bit of fluidity to things. So let's talk about some of the highlights here. So when it comes to professional development, it's important that it's timely, that it's relevant and that it's within the budget. And as I referenced, there's really a, a tension often between very content specific. Say if you're in the English department and you want to spend additional time honing your craft and working on your curriculum plan and your strategies particular to English content or Spanish or, or science or math. There's often a desire among staff to have that opportunity. And simultaneously, then there are broad initiatives that are important in meeting the needs of students and collaborating amongst staff that are also important and yet may not have the same content based relevance that we have. So choosing those things is as much of an art as it is a science and kind of a constant check in on what's working and what needs, what needs additional attention. And then another just consideration is that our schedule creates some limitations for professional development that we have to take into account in here. So I just referenced that there is that push and pull between specific content, more towards what people teach specifically and broad student center PD. Some of the things that have come up on that latter category are strategies to support our English language learners, trauma informed instruction, de-escalation strategies for students, a variety of different things that are more broad. A few years ago, we did a poverty simulation where staff were able to get a sense of some of the challenges that, that students have to overcome just to get in our building and how they can infuse, you know, different language and strategies into their classroom to make all feel welcome. So balancing this is an important aspect of our PD plan. So if we were just in a vacuum and we were just like Placid Central and didn't have a mothership to dock to, we probably could do some more things with regularity, but there is a mothership and it's the New York State Education Department. And over the past few years, the board may remember that many of the pronouncements from New York State have come down and have required training. So some of those include ensuring that the science of reading is the case six curriculum for schools. There's been a push over the last decade for computer based testing. And so not only in that instance, do we have to buy the technology requisite to conduct the testing, then we have to teach students at a much younger age to, you know, have a faculty and facility in using those devices. So there's a push and pull with all these things. TCIS training, that's our trauma informed approach to, to deal with students who have escalatory behaviors to deal with them in an appropriate way. We have new science investigations that have come down the bike over the past several years and new science tests this year at our high school level. We have regents exams that are still required by New York State and then revisions to those exams that have happened in different subject areas over the, the past several years. So we have our needs internally and then we also have our obligations to keep pace with what New York State is pushing down on us. So I wanted to take a minute and reference a little bit of some of the, the dictum from the mothership. Okay, so specifically, the New York State Education Department over the past several years has focused on its portrait of a graduate. And they created a commission called the Blue Ribbon Commission. And the Blue Ribbon Commission was designed to identify if at the end of a student's public high school career, if the manner in which students are assessed now is reflective of what New York State wants in terms of an education for students. And the portrait of a graduate that they, they identified, seven core components of what they want to see students have when they graduate. Critical thinking, being problem solvers, global citizenship, communicating, social emotional competence, cultural competence and literacy in the content areas. That latter one, of course, being the most content driven of all of the seven, you know, aspects of this, but ultimately this is where New York State wants to see districts go. So I, this is going to be difficult. This is not a reading test, I assure you. So I will try and condense this, but this gives you an idea of what the New York State Education Department walked away from when they had that Blue Ribbon Commission create the portrait of a graduate. Their action plan to actually facilitate that vision for students. And so their, their next steps as we are now is to adopt the portrait of a graduate, which they've since done, to redefine credits and learning experiences. All right, so this is, this is big. There's a reason why this phase in is going to happen over several years is because what the vision of the New York State Education Department is, is to have a level of fluidity in receiving credits based on a student's proficiency. And so seat time and, and year long courses or half year courses, those are the bedrock that our New York State education system is based on. And they want it to, to be more fluid to meet the needs of individual students. Enacting that is going to be an extraordinary task for schools to do. So I'm, I'm certainly looking forward to, to seeing how New York State is, is looking to support that. But I also think it's, it's certainly a lot of the, you know, expression of, of their portrait. Another is to sunset diploma assessment requirements. So presently now in New York State, you have to take regents exams in order to, to get a regent's diploma. And the push away from that is to moving to different, one diploma that can ultimately be achieved through different means. So those different means could be showcasing proficiency in a number of avenues, not just state tests. So it's, as I said, it's, it's a more responsive approach to student learning and showing what students know. But it's a complete sea change for public education. So the graduation measures initiative in terms of the timeline. So basically last year's students, they, they just rolled as usual, no, no changes. Students in last year's cohort, this year's cohort in two thousand twenty six, current credit requirements with diploma assessment requirements will sunset by fall of two thousand twenty seven. And so we're, we're really just a couple of years away from starting to see some of these things take place. And even in, if you, you look at the, the micro level of implementation for this beyond the broad strokes here, there are things even for next year that districts are expected to start putting in place, like to have a financial literacy course, for example, for students. That's an important component of New York State's plan. By two thousand twenty seven and two thousand twenty eight, there's going to be new credit requirements in CTE or career and technical education. They're going to sunset diploma assessment requirements. So students will not be required to pass regent's exams to graduate. And students will graduate with one diploma with redefined seals and endorsements. So now in our present system, there's a local diploma that a student can achieve if they've met the local school's criteria for graduation. Then there's the regent's diploma, successful passage of at least five regents. And then there is a regent's diploma with advanced designations. That's where you see some of the things like the seal of bi literacy or the civics endorsement, things like that, or a technical endorsement. If someone goes to the Adaric Educational Center for both these classes. By two thousand twenty nine and beyond, student proficiency in both learning standards. By two thousand twenty-nine and beyond, student proficiency in both learning standards and the portrait of a graduate will be required. Students will graduate with one diploma with redefined seals and endorsements and a statewide transcript will be required. So there's a lot to unpack here. Um, certainly, the pronouncements from the mothership over the next several years are ambitious. Um, but we all, as I referenced, we're taking the pulse on our students, our staff, and our community to see what it is on the ground that people want to see improvement in. And we also have our data that we've been collecting on, you know, overall academic performance. So finding is going to be a challenge, an opportunity, but a challenge for for public schools over the next several years.
So Tim, some of these other options that they're offering as seals on the diploma, when they're taking away the regents exams to be passed, is it making it the diploma something easier to obtain? So once you've taken away those regents exams, I guess I'm just trying to understand, it seems like, um, and I don't mean to use this term, but you hear it sometimes, like, when students are going in and taking different college exams that they're dumbing down. Is this any example of that or we're making this more rigorous?
So I wasn't on the Blue Ribbon Commission, nor am I an agent for a New York State Education Department. Let me put that disclaimer in effect. But I would say that I believe if you were to ask a member of the State Education Department, they would say that this is designed to ensure that students can show their proficiency in the manner that they are most successful at. And that uh, a purely assessment-driven system uh, really only plays to a certain demographic in the school. Uh, as an educator, do I believe that certain students are uh, more adept at test-taking than others? Absolutely, it's not even a question.
Yeah.
Uh, so the question is, if there's alternative pathways to to graduation success, then are they sufficiently rigorous? So your question doesn't even need to be answered, right? Um, and that remains to be seen because, I mean,
How do you adapt of of an assessment for people that will proficient at when you have a classroom structure? How do you do that?
Well, that's differentiating instruction.
Right.
Right, and and that's, that's an important component of some of the professional development that we we uh, do and need to continue doing with our staff on an ongoing basis. Uh, I think like to follow on your question, Ron, and sort of on yours too, Colleen, is that like, how do you um, how do you run a race when the the finish line is in different locations?
Right, exactly.
And I think that's what remains to be seen is that, you know, many of the things that are in the portrait of the graduate, they are representative of our values here in our district as evidenced through our strategic plan. We have really put a focus on civics and citizenship. We have really put a focus on uh, community interaction, on career training, um, job uh, shadowing, internships, like these are things that are of great value to our district. Cultural competence, we've talked about the field trip students take at different times. So I think we're all speaking the same language. It's just such a a change in um, operations that it's, it's going to be interesting how it's enacted.
And Colleen responds to you as far as like when you say a regents diploma.
Yeah.
If you leave the state,
Yeah.
nobody knows like our children
Only in New York.
Only in New York.
Yeah, so that is our perceptions, but
It's not the rest of the world.
In the rest, yeah, it's very obvious. So who cares what the regents diploma is because, yeah.
That's interesting, maybe a pendulum is swinging this way now and we'll see how long it stays in that direction.
Hundred percent, yeah, I'm sure John Dewey would be thrilled at the prospect of this, but you know, it's, it's it's just another trend. Uh, so this is just gives you an idea of the point, the different phases. So we right now find ourselves in the installation phase. Um, so basically, well, just prior to the installation phase is fall, so distribution of required credits announced. So even now, we don't have complete clarity on what acceptable is going to look like. Um, so that's a tremendous sea change for for all public educators. And there's always, this is an ongoing debate, there's always been facets of in education of, of, you know, maybe more um, drill-and-kill, old-school kind of mentality of like, uh, we need to be ready for the test. We're gonna, we're gonna go through these questions and like, students can like, you know, do very well on those questions. But then there's also folks who feel that it's more about application-based approaches to education. And I mean, the research on brain science and retention of information really suggests that interleaving experiences along with new content and referencing old content, that's what embeds in your brain the ability to retain information. Otherwise, many people experience the, you know, the brain dump experience. You know, you hit your Red Bulls and coffee, prepare for your test, and then two days later, you know, you forgot who signed the declaration of events, so. Um, it's, it's interesting just to see. So I'm just coloring your understanding of professional development with this lens, okay? It's the most ambitious approach from New York State that I can recall in my twenty years of education. Uh, so what PD delivery models do we actually have in our district? Um, so one of the first that we have is our department leader framework. Um, so we have fourteen different departments based on content. So this was created somewhat in deference to the desire of staff to have more content-specific goals for their concentration. And so uh, our department leaders, we meet bi-monthly with the administration. Uh, and then each May, teams present on a challenge that they had instructionally that they as a team meant to work through and to share the results of that. What what we found, certainly upon my arrival to the district, I know it was something um, that was articulated amongst staff is that there wasn't a ton of collaboration going on between departments and there was very little collaboration going on between buildings. And so in in deference to those goals of trying to build on that collaboration, the structure was put in place. In addition to that, we do have an Alock Heart Catalog of Professional Development, which I'll show you what it looks like in just a second, it's called Frontline, it's not the TIC thing. Um, then we have state and national conferences that periodically our staff attend. Um, and then we have our superintendent days. So this is what um, our frontline PD system, one of the toggles, looks like on the side. You hit activity catalogs and then you can scale down and look at different BOSI's Board of Education Services, uh, proper services across New York State. They have different professional development offerings that can be selected. So if you were to select our local FEH BOSI's one, then you would see different offerings that are available either remote or in person or asynchronously perhaps. Um, staff members uh, click on those and they register. And then there's a multipart approval process for for district administration to approve based on the relevance, uh, the ability to uh, retain substitutes and whatever else, the impact on the district, and of course, the budget to, our ability to to provide all those things. This is, um, if you were to choose the Albany-based catalog, CAP region catalog, you'd see a different set of offerings, it looks very similar to that, the only difference is just on top, your catalog. And then we have our superintendent's days, so really we have four superintendent days throughout the school year. Uh, so this is just an example of a schedule, um, part of a schedule, this one ends at twelve-twenty, but I just couldn't fit it all in the picture. Um, so in this schedule from two thousand twenty-two, uh, we had departments um, meeting to discuss data collection and um, building towards this this uh, system in May where different departments collaborate and share their their efforts with one another. Uh, but we also had some things that were very specific to certain subgroups of students. So we have students who require additional technology to fulfill their individualized education plans. So sometimes they need additional technology. So Sarah Allen ran an assistive tech. Um, workshop for people, every year our bus monitors and um, drivers need to be refreshed in uh, their credentials. So that's a requirement. Um, and then at the bottom, you can see our department leaders met to um, you know, discuss what instructional challenge they wanted to work towards towards May. So our schedule and time limitations, as I said, four superintendent days. Um, I mean, I consider myself a teacher-thinking superintendent, having spent a fair amount of time in the classroom. And I can just tell you that these days are designed to fit in a place where people are most focused on something else. Um, it's just the nature of the schedule, unfortunately. We have a hundred and eighty days mandated by New York State. The first two days of the year, uh, we have two superintendent days. We spend time preparing on routines and getting ready for the start of the year, introducing new staff. And then there's the separate focus amongst a variety of teachers, I need to prepare for the arrival of students, I gotta get my classroom ready. So like the push and pull of being accommodating and supportive of our staff, but also pushing in the direction that is gonna be beneficial for long-term improvement in professional development, that's something that um, is as much an art as it is a science. So a collaborative approach with our department leadership team is one of the reasons why that team exists. It's to try and give us insight so we can strike the balance between those two things. We have two other days as well. Um, this one, this year, one is in March and one is in November. And then we have a smattering of half-days throughout the year. Um, and anytime we have a half-day, we're basically um, putting a challenge on families of young students. Because, you know, childcare is something that schools provide in addition to enrichment and academics. So all of these do give us um, some timing challenges and constraints. Uh, so how do we actually measure the effectiveness of professional development? So there's a variety of different ways that we try to do it. Um, so we do our surveys in part to glean from our staff, our students, and our families, um, where where teachers need to grow in the classroom, where the district can support teachers more, and what professional development is is going to be most beneficial. There's classroom observations from administrators. Um, and then, of course, as I referenced, there's state mandates that need training as well to to fulfill. Uh, we have our department leaders who make recommendations. Um, so each December, January, we have a future planning process locally. And we sit down with all departments across the district, find out what's going well, what's not, what recommendations they would like to see happen for the next year. We record all that information, um, we act upon it, and we reflect the information back to the staff so they know that we're not wasting any more time, we're being responsive to to it. And then we also have data, um, you know, so we can look at our three-through-eight assessments, our NWEA tests in math in the LA. Uh, we can look at our regents performance, um, just to get a sense of maybe the subcategories in English or math where we're seeing, oh, students either perform very well or perform poorly. And then we know a focus area for our district should be vocabulary or, um, you know, just different, different aspects of those subcategories, just as an example. So um, we've gleaned some information from staff through surveys and future planning and our department leaders already. Some of the topics that people have put forth, um, being in desire for next year are differentiation strategies in the classroom, teaching students with different needs in real time, um, to be effective, trauma-informed instruction. We're looking at piloting um, three different uh, math programs next year in grades three, four, and five to determine which program of those is the one we should lean into as a district, A through five. Um, another desire has been for to do a poverty simulation, once again, for our newer staff to understand the impacts of that on a family. Um, continuing our department work, looking at these graduation pathways that I referenced, um, getting ahead of this before it it absor- subsumes us over the next several years. Um, we have a reliance on technology, as I mentioned, computer-based testing. But we're also trying to dabble into artificial intelligence in a thoughtful way and basic computer skills. And so we have a a program called Go Guardian that ensures that, you know, students are using what we want them to use in the moment in the lesson and not, you know, surfing and doing things otherwise. So training and understanding um, how to use those tools. We have an ongoing need for English language instruction for our students. And um, we're always looking at ways to um, ensure that our schools are safe and our facilities as secure as possible. The best way to ensure that is repeat training with staff. So we're looking at four superintendent days and that. So it's, it's, you know, competing interests, but this is, this is the nature of of um, how we make incremental progress. So just as I referenced, striking the balance, the tension between very content-driven and targeted PD and general PD speaks to overall educational practices. Um, so our strategy is collaboration with our department leaders, reviewing feedback, and monitoring and responding to student instruction. So conclusion, um, PD is a complex planning process. Collaboration's pretty critical to make sure that if we're doing it right, we lean into it. And if we're not, we know so we can course correct. Um, and the goal is ultimately to put kids at the center of what we're doing.
Thanks, Tim.
Questions?
Do you have uh, some staff just chasing down every educational opportunity and some staff successfully avoiding them?
I don't know about the latter, um, because if they successfully avoided it, then I wouldn't know about it. Um, what I, what I would say is that we have some that are hungry for opportunities. Um, our departments in particular have really advocated for themselves and their colleagues over the last couple of years. So there was a desire to um, have more state conferences attended. And so I think the the English department, um, and maybe the Science Department next year are slated to go to a na- a state conference. Our math department this year went to the state conference in Syracuse, I believe. So um, I I think everyone is desirous of professional development. It's just uh, balance, balancing where you are and also like where you are in the phase of your career. Because you have different abilities to be successful based on your bandwidth and your career. We have highs and lows. It's a good question, Don. I mean, every, everyone participates in our superintendent days, but uh, beyond that, it's it's up to each individual. Some of these things are incentivized, though. People decide to grow on their own, then within the teacher's contract, they they can work credits into additional compensation. So that's
That's good.
Yeah, it supports, it supports them.
Thanks, that was my question a couple of meetings ago. I expected this sort of hands-on discussion, but giving us the overview first is really, really helpful.
Great, yeah, and if if you want a part two, Don, just let me know and we can do, do whatever he's doing, happy to help.
Last item under reports is the information for the board. Um, there's actually a couple of things under public content this time. Um, our goals and objectives, and then it gives various examples throughout the meetings over the course of the year, how we've met those goals and objectives. So you can look over those if you haven't already. And then there's a variety of end-of-the-year dates that are coming up. Um, and it's, it's great fun if you can hit a couple of those, even if you can't attend the entire event, to hop onto the field or in the auditorium for fifteen, twenty minutes and just kind of see what the different areas are about. So um, I would, if you have a moment, take a look at both of those and see if you can participate in some of them. Let's see, minutes of the Board of Education, both of those were under consent. So we will move on to personnel. Uh, personnel consent agenda. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following personnel consent agenda items by B, C, D, E, F, G. Teaching staff, teaching assistant tenure recommendations. Seven H, appointment of long-term technology teacher. Seven I, CSCE title change. Seven J, additional appointment of poll workers through the budget vote May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Seven K, department leader resignation. And seven L, summer school work appointments. May I have a motion, please?
Please, I'll second.
Any discussion under those?
Congrats to all of our um, stu- uh, staff who are up for tenure after all their service in the district, that's, that's great.
Um, there is six, she has one exemption by Colleen's.
And that's because I'm listed. I'm listed on the summers.
Yes, you're on the summer.
Yeah, sorry.
Additional action items, special education is just for information only. There is an item under executive content we need to look at. And then we have donation acceptance, recommended action, whereas like classes central school, Board of Education Policy six-two-five-five, donations, gifts, and grants to the district allows for the superintendent of schools to accept on behalf of the board, gifts and donations having a value of less than fifteen hundred dollars. Whereas monies have been received as follows. Twenty-four Strider fourteen X student bikes, twenty-four pedal conversion kits, twenty-four fully adjustable helmets, one uh, Strider twenty-inch teacher instructor bike with a pedal kit and helmet, two metal rolling storage racks, and online teacher portal access from the North Country Healthy Heart Network. Now therefore be it resolved in accordance with Policy six-two-five-five. The Board of Education hereby accepts items referenced above from the North Country Healthy Heart Network Incorporated. May I have a motion, please?
Can we?
Second.
What a wonderful gift of items. No, it's awesome.
You'll be able to get my class bikes. So it's good to get it.
No, it's wonderful. No other comments, please vote. Seven yes. Next item is, let's see, whereas Lake Plaza Central School Board of Education Policy 6255, donation, gifts and grants to the district allows for the superintendent of schools to accept on behalf of the board gifts, donations and grants having a value of less than $1,500. Monies have been granted as follows. Educational Opportunity Fund, the Lake Plaza Central School District EdOp, an amount of $1,860 with purposes of sending 12 students to attend the Model OAS. Now therefore be it resolved in accordance with Policy 6255. The Board of Education hereby accepts the check from the EdOp for the Model OAS trip in the amount of $1,860. May I have a motion, please?
Who said that?
Doug, thank you. Thank you, Tom. And all of these donations are wonderful for our students and much appreciated. Please vote. Seven yes. The last item, Recommended Action, whereas Lake Plaza Central School Board of Education Policy 6255, donation, gifts and grants to the district allows for the superintendent of schools to accept on behalf of the board gifts and donations having a value of less than $1,500. Whereas monies have been received in the total amount of $60,300 from the Adirondack Foundation for the purpose of funding the eighth-grade trip to Washington DC in the spring of 2025. Now therefore be it resolved in accordance with Policy 6255. The Board of Education hereby accepts the checks from the Adirondack Foundation in the amount of $60,300 for the eighth-grade trip to Washington DC in the spring of 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Second. Question, the, the letter says 40,000.
I'm a little confused about that.
There's two checks.
There were two checks.
Yeah, there's two checks.
Good question.
That's a free opportunity for the students. And please vote. Tom, I think I'm just waiting for you.
Yeah, I did, there it is, okay.
Seven yes.
60,000.
Moving on to our second, for the good of the cause, any of our guests like to say anything? Anything online here?
No.
Okay. So we will move on to linking goals with agenda items, I'm sure that some of you have some ideas? Would you like to share?
First and foremost, professional development.
Great. The others? Well, Tim's presentation, education with the direction that New York State, as you know, talking about with our graduation requirements, so, education. I mean, it's dangerous reports. And if anybody has anything else, please let Karen know. Our next meeting date and location is June 17th, here in the boardroom. Old agenda topics, professional development, which Tim has addressed. And does anybody have any new agenda topics? There is one thing I'd like to, I think, and it's early because we're just starting to do driver ed next year. But I watched something on the local Channel 5 news that Heinsburg, Vermont did a whole program this spring for their driver ed program where, and, and maybe it's too intense for us in the future, I don't know. But they didn't just have a vehicle like sitting on the oval that was a result of a teenage accident. They did a mock accident where students were involved in the accident and the kids knew the players that were involved in the accident. And then they interviewed the students afterwards and they just remarked how impactful it was to actually see the ambulances there and the fire department. And, and I don't mean to be graphic, students laying in the middle of the road and a cell phone that was smashed, you know, that, just things like that. And I think, you know, in, in the future with us just starting driver ed, because years ago, we, we, we did do the wrecked vehicle and it would be towed onto the oval and the kids would look at it and whatever. But what they did in Heinsburg was much more impactful. And those students walked away from it like, wow. So I'm hoping that we might have access to a program like that once our driver ed program really gets off. So maybe put that there for a new topic in the future.
My fellow guys, I'll be on.
I just, I just think it just, I just, it was just like, it was, it was just, you know, it was really emotional for the students to see that their best friend Johnny was, you know, slayed out on the road and.
I'll say, well, Forks just did one, with, I'll say, by high school.
Yeah.
Going to VMS, like, plus VMS, he's an ambulance, I mean, all, all night yards, the funeral home. And my wife was involved and all the kids were like, hey, so we're not going to bring you around.
Yeah.
So it really hit all, so it's something we do definitely, definitely quarterback.
Yeah, no, it's scary.
That's a complex one, and I, I agree. But it must land on some individual kids, like a bomb that you just can't anticipate.
Right.
I don't know if that caused me to wind out on that, but that could be awful.
They had it, it was an optional thing for the students. It wasn't something where all the seniors were going to go out to the field, it was optional. I think parents had that right to, they felt it was too intense for their student, but I think it seemed like most parents were, you know, I'd rather have my student see what's going on here.
These would be intense.
Yeah, so that they, it's like with that program, what they do when you have problematic students and they take them into the prison for the afternoon and let them have tour of the prison. So sometimes it's a, a little bit of in-your-face that, you know, I, I don't know. I just think it's been, what, two years since that accident of the Mackenzie Pond Road? And just, you know, just awful stuff. So if there's anything that we can do to protect our students, and if it means maybe being a little tough, then I'm all for it. Anyway, just something to think about in the future. So in any event, I think that we are moving on to an anticipated executive session. So all of our friends get to leave. So I do have a recommended action, a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation from the contract. May I have a motion, please?
They're voting.
Thanks, everyone, for coming, appreciate it.
Bye.